All right, so we have a motion to make the change and it's been seconded. Holly?
Fizer?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Weis?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, now we have an opportunity for audience participation. Oh, yes, oh, sorry. We have to approve the agenda now that it's been properly changed and voted on.
The motion we approved is amended.
Second.
All right, Holly?
Fizer?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Weis?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
All right, now we have, we have a big audience out there tonight. We have opportunity for audience participation. If there's anybody that would like to come forward, they would state their name, their address, and speak to us. All right, I see somebody out there standing up.
All right.
Right there at the podium, state your names.
My name is Tom Carey. I live in Hasset, actually, but I am new farmers market manager for the Eastern and Farmers Market. And so it's a pleasure to be here and meet all of you. I've had a chance to meet some of you. But I just wanted to introduce myself.
Great.
And welcome you to come to the opening of the Farmers Market, which is taking place on the 19th this coming Sunday. And we are, our manager's gonna be there and she's gonna...
Yes, we've had a lot of correspondence.
Yes, yes. And open the market for us, and so that will be fun. And we're gonna have music, we're gonna have... What am I forgetting to name?
Oh, Elizabeth Williams.
Dance troupe. And throughout the season, there's about 22 markets. Usually it starts this coming weekend and then runs all the way through October 13th. And I just, I really want to encourage and build a relationship with the city. And if there's ways that we can help support things that you're doing, or if there's things that you want from the market and wanna help us make it a stronger market and support the region. The thing I like about the market for the city is that it's a really nice connection to the rural community outside the city. And it's, I mean, and that's true of every city. It's true of even more so of more urban areas. And that tend to lose those connections. And I think that Farmers Markets are a really nice bridge. And so I think it's really important to have. And just wanna reiterate that we are going to, I would like to pass these around.
Go ahead.
And please take one and spread it on your fridge or pass it around to people, you know. We are gonna have all the food assistance programs, the Double Up Food Bucks, the SNAP. We've Project Fresh and Senior Project Fresh this year. And so we really wanna encourage people to let others know, to take advantage of those programs and make good, fresh, local food more affordable and accessible to people in the community. Any questions or anything?
Well, I, oh, yep, I'm gonna, go ahead.
Just, I've volunteered in the past, but do you still want people to show up around 8:30-ish? Now, count these and...
Mark nine.
Nine?
Nine.
I would love to have volunteers. Thank you.
Well, Tom, I have to say that you've done an amazing job publicizing on Facebook. It's like every day I get the Farmers Market pop-up and everything. And so, and thank you so much for reaching out and, you know, becoming the manager of the Farmers Market and everything. So it's exciting, new year. How many vendors do you think you'll have on Sunday?
We're gonna have about 24, 25 vendors on that opening day, including one food truck. And then we'll have like four or five additional tents with the music and the kids' crafts. And then the, what is Jimmy? The Nature Discovery Center will be there. And then two other things. So we should have about, I think about 30 booths or 30 tents. So I think that would be really nice.
Fingers crossed for good weather.
Yeah, I've heard it's supposed to be good weather, but this is Michigan.
Yeah, right.
It's subject to change.
All right, well, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tom, nice meeting you.
Sorry, thanks a lot.
All right, anybody else out there in the audience that would like to come forward? Okay, we'll go ahead and move right along. We have a Capital Area District Library annual report.
Really? Awesome, that was fun. All right. I don't know, me, I've got handouts.
Yes, you all come very prepared.
All right. And I, I don't have one for you, but I can always get you one. So there you go. Report. A new magnet with our new address on it. You'll see that the grand opening of the library is right there. So it's a handy call. All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Julie Krasinski, head librarian at the Williamson Branch of Capital Area District Libraries. Thanks for giving me a few minutes to share highlights from last year. Last year at the library is unlike anything I'd ever experienced. If I could think of one word to sum up 2018, it would be transformative. A year that began with the chair challenges unfolded into a really vibrant and valuable experience once we inhabited the new space on Van Etteren June. And thank you for your part in that collaboration. We could not have done it without the good faith efforts of the City Council, the Cattle Board, and the schools altogether. So thank you so much. I'm pleased to report that it's been a true success. So going out on a limb like that really did pay off for you all. Some of the things are most evident now that we're in the new spaces, patron experiences. At the previous library, most people popped in to pick up their holds or browse a little bit or just drop stuff off. And now at the new location, people still do those things, but they also come in and they stay a while. We increased seating from two chairs at a single table to a library full of tables and multiple chairs. We have a good number of students after school. We have adults throughout the day in the evening and weekends. And we have families all the time coming in to take advantage, not only of our library services, but what the actual space offers. We have tutoring happening on a regular basis. College students and professionals coming in and using our Wi-Fi, computers, printers, et cetera, uncomfortable seating. And we have casual visitors that come in and just sit and recreate, you know, for hours at a time. So not only is the space more comfortable and inviting for the public, it's also more conducive for library instruction. For example, we offer a free program called Book Librarian. And that is for anyone who needs a little extra help with finding a certain type of information, filling out an application, they're having trouble with some kind of technology, they could schedule a one-on-one appointment with one of me or one of my staff members. At the old location, this was really hard. We had like that one table. There often wasn't a place to sit down with somebody and really help them with what they need help with. So now we can do that. And that's just one example of what we can do. Another perk that came with the new addition is the addition of a full-time professional librarian. Her name is Storm Capiche, and she started in the fall, and she is a delight. So if, if you need help with anything and I'm not there, she's also there full-time and come on in and meet her. She's, she's a fabulous addition to our team. In addition to the move, we continue focus on community outreach. We regularly visit schools every month when school's in session. And we go to the senior center every month. And we take part in community activities like the parades and also concerts in the park. And we're gonna try and add a few things this year, like National Night Out and maybe a few other things. So we try to be where we can to connect with the public and make sure they're informed about library service and what they can get from the library. A couple of other quick notes. In 2018, Cattle celebrated its 20th birthday of being cattle. And we also passed our operational mode in August. So, so far, you know, everything, everything's going really well. So thus far in 2019, things are moving smoothly. And we're looking forward to what's yet to come, including renovation and a proposed story walk in McConner Park. So that's it in a nutshell. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
You, you look like weights have been lifted off your shoulders.
Yeah, I think Scott would agree.
Yeah.
Our executive director, Scott Dymstros, is here, as well as our board president, Depp Lupus. So, but yeah.
We're hiding behind the camera.
Yeah, they made it, it's been a long time.
Well, it's so good that you guys are so happy in your new home.
Yes.
I know that that was a long...
It was.
Long path to get down, but I'm so excited for you guys.
They're really, it, it really did pay off. And it was, it was really quite unprecedented to get three bodies, three organizations, to all move in the same direction and do something that was so unique.
Yep.
And like I said, it, it really did pay off to, to, to take that leap and have that vision that it could be better. And we, we've had no complaints, you know.
So one question I have, because I know that this was, it was kind of a hot topic when we were discussing the whole transition and move over. How has the relationship been with the middle school students and cattle?
Oh, it's, it's been great.
Good.
They are very well behaved. And we have also responded in kind to, if they're gonna be there after school, we often have a program set for them. So we've done a lot of new things, after-school programs. We've had writing programs, drawing programs, Harry Potter. We had Lego today, Lego after-school. Movies. And some days we get more than others, but they know that they're always welcome. And one week, we had like two things right in a row. On Wednesday, the kids came and said, what do we have today back here? You know, it's like, nothing today, I need a break, you know?
Good.
But they come in and they, they sit there, they're comfortable, they know they can ask us for help. We also see all of the sixth grade English kids every three weeks. And so a lot of those kids, we see them when they come in and we help them as part of a class field trip every three weeks. And then when they come in, in their own time, they are kind of already know us. So that's really nice. And we're gonna actually continue that with seventh grade next year. So the seventh grade English kids will be coming in every three weeks. We have yet to figure out the, the actual logistics of that, but we'll be seeing sixth and seventh grade next year kind of in a regular way. So just trying to connect with them and know that they can come to us if they need help and it's been no problem at all. They've been really well-behaved, great kids.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Well, don't wait so long to come and see us.
No, and I've been meaning to, exactly. Well, we've, we've had our hands full. And I would like Scott to help me with this, because kind of the part B to my report...
Yes.
Is to talk with you about the renovation.
Yes.
And some of the budgeting and some of the, the vision we have for that. So do you wanna start?
Sure. So I wanna explain this, 'cause I have the, the proposed budget and, and I wanna explain the breakdown of the, the different contributions, so you don't get sticker shock from it. Because I know that when, I'm sorry? Yeah, I'll hand it out. And I, I just wanted to explain before I hand it out.
Okay.
So when, when we met, when Rachel was, was interim city manager...
Yes.
We said some of the responsibilities. It was estimated about $15,000 that the city would be responsible for. We had some issues with an awning, that, a needy, a need for an awning out front after there was, we went through the winter there. And that's mainly a responsibility, it would be a responsibility of the municipality. And so that's why the budget in here for the city is $20,000. But we understand that you did not know that going in. So if you're not comfortable with that, you're still just comfortable with the 15, we will find another way to pay for that awning too. So I just didn't wanna hand this out and then you see that it's $5,000 more. But you'll see the, the main parties that are, are listed in this budget. So one of the, the big parties in there is the, the Stillwater Fund. So there is an endowment of around $50,000 that would go towards either the new construction of a facility, or if it's an upgrade to a current facility, then it could be used towards those funds. And then also, after the city is listed on there, there is a contribution from the Williamson Friends. And so Julie and I met with the Williamson Friends and talked to them about, sure, you would wanna see that. Talked to the Williamson Friends about a possibility of contributing to the project as well. And they actually have approved their line of $15,100 for that. For our part, we originally, the, the part that cattle is responsible for, we originally had budgeted $60,000. When we actually met with, we use a group called Library Design. When we met with them, it came back higher than our budgeted amount. And so we actually allocated another $40,000. Our total contribution would be $91,000 with a contingency fund in there of around $9,000, just in case something comes back more expensive. Our feeling is, is it's worth it. This is going to establish the Williamson Library for the next, Julie and I will be retired by then, so the, the next 20 years. What it does, you can, you can notice by the floor plan, is that one of the biggest costs to us when we go in and redesign one of our facilities, is we actually take out the carpet, saw cut the floor, and lay cabling in so that we can have wired tables, wired furniture, and actually our public computers move to wherever we want them in the facility. Right now, Julie is limited to having them on a wall and then over by the children's area on another wall. This allows us to actually get them out into the library where students can use them for study space, but also adults can use them for some quiet space as well. That's usually a significant cost, but what it does for us is it sets us up, if libraries change in the next 10 years, 15 years, we actually have the data that's in there to be able to add new services in the library. We actually have the shelving that is needed in there as well. If you do visit the Williamson branch, you'll notice that things are either very high or very low. It's not just Williamson, we're actually working with the City of Mason on renovation as well. And we've heard that from the Mason Ranch, too, is, is people like it in an area where they can reach it comfortably. And so that's one of the things that we're really trying to do with this renovation as well. And then I'll let Julie talk about some of the appealing things that she has, especially for the events room that we have planned.
Absolutely. And all of you are welcome to come anytime. And I'll do a walkthrough with you if you can't quite picture it or if you haven't visited yet, please come and visit us. It's really, really apples and oranges than you've ever seen before. If you start in the upper right corner, you'll see by the staff workroom, and you come in there, we are shifting some of the collections near the entrance. But a significant thing that you'll see off to the right is, says fireplace. That is not a true fireplace, that's gonna be an electric fireplace. But we are making more of a quiet room there, a quiet setting. And that's one thing that people have asked for, and that's one thing that we sold when we were trying to sell them, was at the quieter area for people to come. If they wanna sit like the ladies that were on Friday, just sitting at a round table, they were there for several hours just knitting and chatting, just at a regular round table. It's kinda awkward. So we wanted something that was a little more intimate and a little quieter for them. So that's, that's a significant change from what we have now. All the tables you'll see have a little square in them, that's power. So you can plug in and charge your device or plug your computer and it'll work comfortably there. Right outside the director's office is, is right by the entrance there, that's another chair with power. So if you just wanna go sit there and charge your phone up or, and look at a newspaper or whatnot, that would be an area you can do that. We really tried to think about things that were useful and forward-thinking and convenient for people when they're visiting us. We are also going to add a fax machine, so there will be fax service right there at the library now. We get calls for that almost every day. So it will be all self-serve, you just put your money or your card in and you can send a fax. All of the shelving that you see, that's like a white square, that is new shelving. The, the boxes with hash marks, that's existing shelving from the school. And we are keeping as much of that as possible. It's really nice quality and we're, we're gonna keep it if we can. But there were some things that just wouldn't work with that shelving, like the AV materials, the movies, and the music CDs. So that's what you see in front of the circulation desk, those white squares. So that is a significant investment there in shelving to, to have those collections there. We also needed, the circulation desk was not suitable for public use. It was too narrow, it was awkward for staff to sit there, you couldn't see someone walking in. So you could see, we're trying to, we couldn't afford a brand-new circulation desk. So we're trying to modify the one that's there and bring it all up so the staff is up and has visibility and not having to sit down. We're adding a handicap accessible spot, which is the white square, but the rest of it is going to be retrofitted to meet our, to meet our needs hopefully. A significant change is the children's area, which is the diamond shape off to the, to the left. And we are hoping to make that diamond shape so we can make more of a teen area in front of it. So that's kind of a triangle there. That's sorely lacking now. And because we're getting so many sixth, seventh, and eighth graders in the school, from the school into the library, we really needed to make space for them. And we needed to enhance the shelving for their collections. We don't have enough stuff for them. And for the adult fiction, which was another area we need to expand. If we go right into the multipurpose room, this large room here, we are building in a screen so we can show movies, 165-inch screen built in to the wall. And also, we're going to put in a projector in the ceiling. And we're also going to have a sound system put in, surround sound. And so we can, we offer movies now, they're very well attended, so this will just enhance that experience for, for everyone. And also, if speakers come in and talk, they can plug right into that setup. So we'll have a receiver and everything they need. And also, the last thing is the dotted line you see in the multipurpose room. That is going to be half carpet and half of a solid surface that can be easily cleaned. So we can do massy stuff, do some stuff on that floor, and we can easily clean it up very, very low maintenance. So I think those are the highlights. There's a few little, you know, staff room things that we're doing, but nothing significant. That's really, that's really the, the meat of the project right there.
And so the ask from us is the handicap accessible door, the painting, which that area was somewhat neglected by the school. I think Julie said that the cafeteria might have been painted three or four times.
Yeah, it just wasn't used, so they just didn't, so it irrigated.
So it has the original paint in there.
Yeah.
And then it would, it would, it would ask of you going above that budget, but the, the awning, and again, if you don't approve that, we would probably just look for different funds to fund that awning.
Question with the awning?
Yep.
Where entrance is actually relocated?
That would be at the, the main entrance to the library where the book drop is. And so it would actually go out from where the door is all the way out to the book drop, because one of the issues that we have is a lot of, well, the snow that builds up there, but also once the snow is gone and the salt there, the buildup that's especially right outside the door of the library.
And the school's been fabulous about clearing it in a very timely manner, but we got all that ice this year. And no matter how much molder they put on that, there's kind of a shadowy spot there right in that corner, and it just drips down there from the roof and from the eaves, and it really has had...
Will that be in center, is there gonna, plans for heat lamps or anything under there for...
For that, we haven't discussed yet, so.
Other questions?
I do have a question.
It's probably a strange one.
Okay.
Where's the bathrooms?
Oh, they're in the hallway.
Yep.
They're, 'cause this whole thing is there's a hallway that's kind of like separates the school from us. They're, and they're on a locked door.
I've been over there before, I just didn't know.
Yeah, we're not doing anything with the bathrooms, we can't afford it.
I don't, I don't want to do anything with them, I guess.
They could use updating.
Sure, they have them.
They could. In our original proposal, we had updating them, and the, the cost was pretty high. It was one of those nice-to-haves, but didn't make the final call.
Any other questions? Fantastic presentation, so exciting.
One thing I do have is, is if this goes forward, it's gonna be presented to our board this week, and then we'll vote on it next Wednesday. And then also, a week from tonight, I'm going to the school board. They don't necessarily, we're not asking them money from them, but in the agreement it says that we have to, if we're gonna do any type of renovations, we have to get the okay from them. And then also, as far as for the closing and timeline, we would probably try to do the, the project shortly after, after the Fourth of July, because we have to wait for the school to, to be dismissed. But we also have to schedule the contractors who are actually gonna do the work. And it's, the branch would be closed for about four weeks. And so we, we would like to have it in time for us to have some type of ribbon cutting and then also welcome the students back. But in that four-week time, that's usually around the window that we have for branch renovations, we definitely have patrons know. We will definitely try to come up with some alternative as far as for them getting their items or other area branches that they use as well. Maybe even like a mobile library stop, things like that. There's, there's kind of some creative ways that we can kind of get through that four-week time. Because summer is the busiest time for us, that's our holiday season.
And what, I know Julie, when you were handing this stuff out, I thought I heard you say grand opening date, or do you guys have a idea for ribbon cutting on...
No, not yet.
Yeah, would probably be like second week of August. So, you know, we'd like to have it in time where, where, where people are around, but also not bump into when there's school orientation.
Yeah. Okay. Alrighty. I know that that is not an action item for us on here. I think Cory, we're gonna have to talk about that as far as like increasing budgets. So we'll have Cory get that on our, do you wanna hand on that next agenda?
Technically, with $15,000 budgeted, you'd probably be looking at a budget of a minute to consider that request. One other thing that we talked about is whether cattle, I guess, does the contracting or whether we do it. And so another way you could see it is if there's a proposal and it goes through the city that council would have to approve, the contractor, you know, for each thing.
Okay.
So I asked our facilities director about that. So for the doors and the awning, we would probably have you work with a contractor for the paint. We're actually using the vendor that, that we're going through with the carpet and some of the furniture things, so we would actually probably work with that vendor for the painting.
Got it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Okay, moving on, looking for an approval for council meeting minutes of April 22nd. Does anybody have anything that needs to be changed, or can I get a motion to approve what was just been submitted?
So, second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
No, we have a council table?
I have a chance to review a council table this evening, and I'd like to make a motion to approve check 7-1714. True. Check 7-1759. In total, $177,426, so 14,470.
Second.
All right, Holly?
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Fizer?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Weis?
Yes.
All right, moving on to action items. I think this is the longest list we've had, from A through O. So we will try to do these in a good timely manner, but please, if you have questions or anything that you need to ask, make sure that you do that. The first one is our resolution for charitable gaming license for weekend survival kits.
I don't, you know, I, I'm thinking of the problem with it, but I just saw, what, what are they doing, a raffle, what are they doing?
Oh, Holly, go ahead.
Oh, I believe they're gonna be selling raffle tickets to help support their 5K in September.
Okay.
The event is going.
All right, so anybody have any other questions?
I make a motion to approve a charitable gaming license for weekend survival kits. Second. Questions?
Yes.
Right here on the paper we got, page 1A, it looks like there's dates and times, we need to have that in motion for this or no?
No, you're just, you're proofing the resolution.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, Holly?
Gilroy?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bizzer?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Wise?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
All right, next we have our second reading of the monthly utility billing ordinance amendment. Rachel, thank you so much for you and your staff doing such great work on this.
Thank you.
And you guys explained it so very well the first time. Does anybody have any additional questions for Rachel regarding this?
You ready?
I know.
All right.
We actually have kind of rolled it out a little bit to a small group of people who are ACHers because we do have to have them provide us a new documentation. And we wanted to give them as much notice as possible to get that return. And the response has been very positive so far.
Okay.
So we're looking forward to it.
All right. Looking for a motion, or?
Make a motion to approve the second reading of the monthly utility billing ordinance amendment.
All right, thank you both. Holly? Walton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bizzer?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Wise?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Great work. All right, next we have consideration of fireworks show by night magic displays. And I actually have a question. Councilman Wise, I know you live over in that area. In the past, has there ever been concerns from Plymouth Landing regarding the fireworks show or anything like that?
There have not.
Okay.
We enjoy them.
Okay, good. All right, I just want to make sure, because I mean, looking at the map they gave, and they put a little circle on there.
Maybe you have a question.
Yes, yes, Jim. Long time no see.
Chitha Forest, former council member, et cetera. When I was on council, there was one occasion where it was fairly windy and some of the debris or ash or whatever from the fireworks did drift over into some people's things. That's a factor. I do remember on one other occasion, it was very dry or very windy on, I think it was July 3rd. So they postponed it and moved it to the end of August, which just happened to be the Thursday night of the very last bandshell concert. So you go to the concert, the bandshell, then go out in my neighborhood and watch the fireworks.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any questions regarding this request?
We are usually out of town, but we made it to one, and it seemed like everybody absolutely loved it.
Yeah.
A lot of folks down there didn't seem like there were any issues.
Yeah. Well, and I know the one year they couldn't do it because they were doing renovations at the Baptist church. So I think this is great that they're able to bring this back. I hope that they have a successful evening on July 3rd, barring no burn ban restrictions if all of a sudden it becomes a very dry summer, but.
Did you have a fire trip or anything available?
NISA's normally notified, and also state fire marshal, if they put a burn ban out, it will be postponed.
Because I remember what Jim was talking about, about this fire, it's going to somebody's house.
Yeah.
You were very concerned.
I would say if we pass this, that we make a recommendation that they contact NISA or at NISA on it when this happens.
I think that's a great idea. All right. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I guess I'd make a motion to approve the public display of fireworks with the one thing noted that NISA would need to be present during. During the show.
The festivities. And we had to say yes of support. All right, if there's no other questions, Holly? Paul?
Yes.
Bizzer?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Wise?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
All right, we have appointment of Kenneth Semus. Do you know how to pronounce it, Holly? Semus?
Semuziak.
Semuziak, sorry, that's not correct. To the Economic Development Corporation, TIPA 2A, TIPA 2B, for a term to expire June 30th, 2021. It's nice to see people stepping forward and submitting board applications again.
I make a motion to appoint Kenneth Sizmisky to the Economic Development Corporation, TIPA 2A, TIPA 2B, for a term to expire 6/30/21.
All right. Second. All right, thank you. Holly? Bizzer?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Wise?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
All right, next, we're going to need a motion to set the public hearing for the 2019-2020 fiscal year budget for May 28, 2019, at 7:05, which this would be our next regularly scheduled council meeting evening.
So move, second.
All right, Holly? Bellinger?
Yes.
Wise?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bizzer?
Yes.
Next up, we have the application and permit for sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages in McCormick Park, or as now known, Howard Dawson Memorial Park. And this is from the Williamson Lions Club. And it looks like these are the dates for Jubilee this year.
So move, support.
Thank you, Holly? Wise?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Walton?
Yep.
Paul?
Yes.
Bizzer?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Fantastic. Now we have a consideration of resolution authorizing the application of special license for the Williamson Lions Club. Again, this would be in concert with the application we just approved.
So move.
Thank you.
So move.
All right, thank you, Holly? Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bizzer?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Wise?
Yes.
All right. We have two reappointments for current board members. The first is for Narda Murphy to the Downtown Development Authority for a term to expire June 30th, 2023.
So move.
Second.
All right, Holly? Gilroy?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bizzer?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Wise?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Next is reappointment of Pete Porcelio. He is our current chair for the Economic Development Corp., TIPA 2A, TIPA 2B, for a term to expire June 30th, 2025.
So move, support.
All right, we got this down, good guys, good.
Yes.
Holly? Walton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bizzer?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Wise?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
All right, now we have an amendment for St. Mary's request for waiver fees for an, we had already approved this, if you saw the memorandum that was included in here. What they're doing is they're changing the date from August 2nd to August 3rd. So we just need to make that motion to accept the date change.
Make a motion to change the date from August 2nd to Saturday, August 3rd, for St. Mary's festival.
All right, Holly? Paul?
Yes.
Bizzer?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Wise?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
All right, now, next up, we have spring pavement patching. Scott?
Well, I have an M.O. packet for you. One Way's provided us with quotes for doing pavement patches. Most of this work is related to the water main issues that happen in the winter time that we have to fix, and then we have to subsequently fix the asphalt. There is one extension, and that's the alley that's to the west of City Hall here. It is extremely rutted, it's causing problems with the plow trucks, it's causing problems with the people who use the alley way for icing and things like that because of the pockets of water that sit in there in the breeze. So we've looked at it. The infrastructure in the alley is extremely poor, but at this point, we're still working on how we can fund facing that infrastructure. So at this point, we're trying to minimally fix the problem with the alley by getting some of that filled in and a little bit of mat extended over top of that. And it should buy some time for us without wasting money.
Okay.
So is this a cap or is this like a million bill?
It's a cap.
Okay. I know you have a whole list and hierarchy of once funding comes in, where everything goes. Where does the alley fit into that?
It's a high priority, but I can't, there's a lot of high priorities.
Mayor?
Yes, yes, all right.
On that note, we just went through a prioritization process with the DDA. And we did talk a lot about infrastructure within the DDA district. And that alley was probably the number one infrastructure need in the district. So while the DDA also doesn't have, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars to pop into that right now, I think that we started to lay that groundwork of at least thinking about that because you've got a number of businesses that are serviced by that infrastructure in the alleyway. So just keep that in mind as the DDA makes its, you know, next two to five-year planning, that could be part of where we find some money for that.
That would be nice, that would definitely be nice. I think it would be a benefit to the downtown district, and that would be a good project for them to have. All right, well then, I'm looking for an action on this unless anybody else has other questions for Scott. Thank you very much, Scott.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposal for pavement repairs for the one-way asphalt and excavating ink in Williamson, Michigan. Greatest watering repairs in the alley overlay for the combined total not to exceed $7,985.
Okay, so, thank you. Holly? Walton?
Yes.
Bizzer?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Wise?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
All right, next, the consideration of equipment purchase for Volunteers Community Park. And this is over near the Commons, next to the Trent Allen Basketball Court. And I have to say, Friends of the Williamson Parks have done a phenomenal job raising the funds to be able to put this project and move it forward. And I just can't say enough, I wish Heather and some, I know that Kent, you're, you know, on parks and rack, and you guys work closely with the Friends of the Williamson Parks, but I just, you know, it's amazing. It's amazing that they've been able to fundraise and take care of this. I know that we don't have a representative here, so I'm looking for a motion. Fortunately, you know, if you have questions, we're not going to be able to get them answered unless Cory has other questions, or Rachel?
I supplied a memo in the packet. Basically, it's the same equipment that they've been looking to purchase, I think, two years, the past two years, they applied for the DNR passport grant and were unsuccessful. They were very successful in some other community foundation grants from Inglewood County area. And so they're ready.
Good.
And they, I think, I'm not sure if I put it in this memo, yep, they did put it in the memo. They have a proposed build date of July 25, 26, and 27. And they're looking for volunteers. So I know that they did a sign-up genius online, you can find it, and they'll be blasting it out on Facebook. So anybody that's willing to help, they would love to have them.
I would say they are a close second to the number of, you know, marketing on Facebook that Tom has done for Farmer's Market. So yeah, they've definitely, I see that pop up quite a bit too. So yeah, they are definitely ready, so I am ready for a motion.
I make a motion to approve the purchase of playground equipment for Volunteers Community Park for Miracle Midwest. The amount had to exceed $50,188 to be reimbursed by Friends of Williamson Parks. Second.
All right, Holly? Bizzer?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Wise?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Now, I'm looking for a motion to set City Council Infrastructure Funding Work Session for Tuesday, May 28th. It will be prior to our City Council meeting, and it will start at 6:00 P.M.
So move, support.
All right, Holly? Bellinger?
Yes.
Wise?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Bizzer?
Yes.
This is not one I'm looking forward to. But as you all have received in your packet, we have received a letter of resignation from Councilman Kent Hall. And I want to just thank him so much for giving time and resources and time away from family and being so passionate about the different projects that you've worked on here in this community and being a council member and getting out and speaking with residents and. I told you on the phone, I was sad, I didn't want to take your resignation.
Well, only thing I want to say is that there is no issues, there's no problem. This is not making a statement, I'm upset about this. No, it's strictly health-related, and it's something I have to do. So, and I think the council, you can see how these guys are working together. I mean, the council's working great, Cory's been such a great addition, so I really feel comfortable. It's been an honor.
Jim, you have your hand up. You know how this works.
I too wanted to, that's why I came tonight, to express my appreciation for everything that Kent has done. Not just on council, but before he was on council. He took some steps in a rather bad situation to help correct it and that some of the rest of us came in and made it work, like you guys are all working tonight. So I really appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Jim. All right, well then I am looking for a motion to accept Councilman Hall's resignation.
If you're out quiet, we have to.
Okay.
I regretfully make a motion to accept his resignation effective June 1st. Is that right?
Yes.
Second.
Holly? Bellinger?
With regret, yes.
Wise?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Bizzer?
Yes.
Paul?
Yeah.
Well, I can always count on Kent for, you know, coming up to, you know, make somebody laugh or giggle and everything. But in my talks with Kent, I asked him if he would stay on through the month of May so that he can help us move forward the budget for the next fiscal year because I think that's important. But this also gives us the opportunity, now that we've accepted his resignation, we will be able to now receive applications to appoint a new council member. And those applications can be found online through our website, or you could step into City Hall and pick one up. And Tim Prohm, you have something to add?
Just that under the city charter, the vacancy would need to be filled within 60 days.
Yes.
And it would only extend through the next city election, regardless of when the term expires.
Right, thank you for that, I appreciate that.
If someone applied before they allowed, or, or, do you keep a record, or do they have to reapply?
Um, you, it, like, if we had a previous application on file, I think they would have to reapply, right, Holly?
Okay.
Yep, so, if somebody out there would like to give of their time and talents and serve on City Council, and help Williamson continue to move forward, we would certainly appreciate those applications. And Holly, you'll let us know once we start receiving some, and if we receive some, find our next council meeting.
Do you want to make a deadline with, to be seen?
I would really like for that transition to be kind of seamless, but I understand that that's not always possible, so, um, I would say if we could maybe, let's start out with a deadline of, our next council meeting is May twenty-eighth, sorry, thirteen, let's say, it's pretty tight, no, because we have to get somebody seated within sixty days. So, is it sixty days from today?
When the vacancy...
When the vacancy, so we actually could go to the end of October, I really don't wanna do that, 'cause we've got some other things coming up that I would really like to have a full council on. Let's say, um, what's our first June?
June tenth.
June tenth is our first, that's almost a month, so, yeah, let's go ahead and make June tenth deadline, or probably the Thursday prior.
Probably say twenty.
Yeah, and we'll see what we get. And then, if we could also publish that on Facebook, if one of the staff members could do that, um, that would be great, and then that gives the council the ability to share it in their network. Okay, um, we had our add-on action item, and this is the Trent Allen Memorial Basketball Court, and I believe we had something on our desk, yes, for, uh, crack repair and resurfacing proposal, Scott?
Yes, uh, in two thousand fourteen, we went out and researched and, and talked with the schools with what they do with the tennis courts and so forth, came up with a good crack seal system and coating system, um, researched who did that, got bids, only got one company in this area that, that can do the work and provide pricing, um, so we went back to them and said, what's the action, uh, for this, it's five years later, um, so there's a six-hundred-dollar increase in that, um, with the cost of materials and labors and, and so forth, I, I don't see that does any reason at this point.
Dan?
Is this the same group that the school uses for theirs, or does the school do it in-house?
I believe it's the same group that they use, but I know that there's a lot of other communities and park systems that are using the system as well. That was part of the research that we did in two thousand fourteen.
Any more questions?
I do. So the, it says crack sealing and resurfacing, so the resurfacing part, is it like a liquid resurface, or is it...
It's, it's the green material and the restriping, it's a special athletic surface-type material that's put under, and it's not just regular crack sealing.
That's why I was asking.
It's, yeah, it's got sanded, it's got cemented, and it's got the, you know, the...
Yup.
Yeah.
What it means, all right?
Mayor?
Yes.
Was, uh, is this budget, or was this required budget by then?
It was a planned, uh, or planned in this year's budget. Now, it was planned at seventy-five-hundred dollars, 'cause we just took a stab at it, so it was slightly over what we had planned, um, but there's other maintenance stuff in the parks, there's enough budget to cover that.
Good.
Good question, thank you. All right, I'm looking for a motion to move this forward.
Make a motion to authorize, uh, crack sealing and resurfacing proposal with securing asphalt and sealing incorporated into Michigan in the amount of seven thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars.
Second, with a question for Scott.
Okay.
When are you scheduled this to be done with the construction of the playground equipment?
This will be done in this budget year, um, they shouldn't have to be on the course with the other project.
Okay.
Okay.
Fair enough.
All right, Holly? Weiss?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Welton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Fizer?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yeah.
That concludes our very long action items list. We do not have any discussion items, we did receive correspondence from the Michigan Municipal League, we also received information regarding the upcoming twenty-twenty census, which is next year, so that was for us to be able to read through. So I will move right along to, um, City Manager Reports, Cory, very nice, long report. Does anybody have any questions, or is there anything you'd like to add?
Just one more thing, um, I had an opportunity to go to the Williamson Area Service Organizations, or WASSO, meeting today, and, uh, I've been to those, I think, since my first month here. Today, by far, was the biggest turnout, I'm not sure exactly why, but there was a great turnout, and the whole table was full, and there was even people in the audience, so to say, so, um, I always think, you know, it's nice to go there, 'cause you're reminded of the great work that a lot of the service organizations do. Councilman Hall might talk a little bit about it later, but he was there as well, and, uh, just a lot of good things going on with Jubilee coming up, and all the things associated with that, uh, with all the service organizations participating, uh, so it's, it's getting to be in that exciting time, uh, of the summer time here, so...
Excellent, thank you, thanks for sharing. So, nobody have any questions for Cory, so we'll move right along to Chief, he's sitting over there.
Nothing to report.
All right, excellent. Okay, um, committee, subcommittee member reports, anybody from any boards like to, let us say, update on the meeting?
So, the plan and commission, we just approved the site plan for the Williamson Barbell Club, um, I wanna thank the staff for their time, for CrossFit, CrossFit, not barbell, sorry, I'm looking at, I symbolize, or looking at the logo, but, um, I wanted to thank the staff for their work on that, again, that was a lot, and it's a tough one to push through, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff came to the NISA meeting the other night, and I was very impressed, he did a great job, great job, asked some great questions, I kept my mouth shut the whole time. Yeah, thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome. Was that for the county, coming, or were you...
No, that was, uh, the city representative for the, uh, fire ad hoc community. Good discussions.
Excellent.
It will be ongoing.
All right, excellent, thank you, thank you very much. Now we have an opportunity again for audience participation, anybody out there? Jane, come on up. This isn't Price is Right, but you're the next.
No, no, thank you, I'm Jane Reagan, and I live on McCauley Street. Um, Mark, Farmers Market Manager, Tom, asked me to tell you the things that he forgot to tell you.
He's a little nervous. What's the stuff there?
He's, you know, he's, he's fine, but he just had a hectic day, he had asked me to come and do what he did, and then he remembered the, all the things he wanted to add to you.
All right.
So, first of all, thank you very much, City Mr. Manager, for reinstalling the hitching rail that, um, took, caught the Farmers Market off guard, and now, uh, the vendor that uses it will be able to return for the season, so thank you very, very much for getting that up before the season started. One thing that we always need, and you mentioned it, sir, Mr. Bellinger, is we always need volunteers, and, um, I'm the coordinator of the volunteers this year, so you can, um, call me, uh, or write a note on Facebook, um, if you'd like, I can give you my phone number, you can write on the back of the card that you just got today, or I can put you all on, since your email addresses are public, I could put you on my email list whenever I'm begging for volunteers, but we need people to set up at, from nine to ten, takedown from two to three, and then during the day, we need people, we do, um, visitor counts, the m- manager might need assistance for some things, so those kinds of little day-to-day things, um, we, we need during the ten o'clock to two o'clock, um, portion of the market. And soon, we'll be launching our website, um, there are many good reasons to have a website, first of all, we'll be able to reach more people, of course, but that, it will also have a donate button, which is really, really important for the market, we have no funding, the only funding we get is from grants and donations and fundraisers, and so, having a donate button in an age where people really aren't accustomed to donating online is really, really critical, and many grandees don't even consider your request unless you have a website, so we've learned that. So, look forward to the launch of our website. And finally, speaking of fundraisers, we don't have a separate handout for this yet, but on the last Friday of school, that's Friday, June seventh, is our biggest fundraiser of the year, our third annual food truck throwdown, and the first one, we had five thousand people shock us by showing up. Last year, we moved it to the Williamson Roadhouse, where, near Christians, at the corner of M fifty-two and Grand River, and we had only four thousand people show up, and we've been blessed with good weather, and, um, we will have, we anticipate, we have commitments now for ten, we're anticipating a dozen food trucks, and live music, and, um, we just need a, a nice weather, but it's gonna go on, rain or shine, unless it's too dangerous. So, mark your calendars for those dates, thank you very much.
Jane, thank you.
Can I ask of the hard question?
Ask me anything.
Okay. Curious minds wanna know why the food truck rally has not been moved back to the location of the Farmers Market itself?
Well, the first year, it was really, really hard to get, um, a beer and wine license, and the organization, the Roadhouse already has a, a beer and wine license, so we didn't have to go through that hassle.
Great. When do you anticipate the website launch?
Any minute now.
Awesome.
I mean, I've been hearing, we've been hearing for two weeks from a webmaster, so, truly, any minute now, we hope.
Excellent, excellent.
So there'll be, hopefully, an article in the paper about that.
Good, thanks, Jane.
Yep, you're welcome.
All right, any other audience members out there? Okay, I'm gonna go, uh, right down the row, Councilmember Comments, I'll start with Councilman Weiss.
Just, uh, thank you, Kent, the short time I've been on council, I've learned that your, uh, willingness to say the minority opinion perhaps sometimes, uh, is much easier, so I appreciate it.
Reins?
I echo that and what everyone else has said so far, I, as soon as I, uh, as we got our agendas emailed, as I saw that, and I called Kent, and I said, Kent, what's going on, and told him I understand why he's, uh, why he's doing it, but he's definitely going to miss, and he has been a, uh, very valuable member of council, um, and then one other thing, it's kind of been a theme through today, is Williamson has great service organizations, and they can always use new members, so if you're looking for something, uh, to, to give back to that's bigger than yourself, consider, you know, working with the, uh, with Farmers Market, or working with the Food Bank, or helping out with Jubilee, or the Lions, or any of these groups, and it's always, uh, you get back more than you give. I know it's tough, I mean, I, we've all got busy lives, but when you make the time to, uh, to join and help out with one of these groups, it really blesses you.
Thank you. Mr. Fizer?
Kent, you know how I feel, but, uh, I understand, me of all people, I really, really do understand, so, if you ever need anything, you know where we're at.
Sadie?
Kent, Kent and I had a long talk the other day, so, he knows how I feel. Anne, um, and Gardia called me.
Oh, yes.
And she's thrilled to death with proclamation.
Oh, good.
And, uh, I sent it out the, right the day after the council meeting, and I, I, I was so nervous about it, because it's a net scudly thing, and so I couldn't, got it, went to the post office and they put it in two different, so she got a box like this, I think, you know, but it, she, it came, well, it was good when it got there, so, and she's really excited to give it to him.
Good, excellent.
Anyway, she wanted me to thank, uh, council for it.
Well, when she gives it to him, if she gets a picture, that would be fantastic, if she could share that.
I can, I haven't called her yet.
Excellent. Mr. Bellinger?
Kent, I just wanna thank you for all your services, um, hopefully it'll continue with the Colonnial, but I'm gonna be volunteering to help you with the Scout Island and the rest of that, um, but, you know, you're a great friend, and, uh, really missed you. Thanks.
Mr. Hall?
My hometown used to be Linden, Michigan, that's where Cory went to high school. So thrilled to have him here and see what an asset he has become, uh, feel real good about him coming here. I'm not going anywhere, um, my medical team, basically, has said, I've gotta cut certain things back, or I won't be here much longer, so, it's really that serious that I have to do something. I'm gonna continue with the veteran causes, um, I'll be around if people need me for certain things, but I'm sticking with the American Legion, and the Honor for All, and Stop the Loss Foundation. You know, I've shared a lot of personal stuff, but, so I won't go into that, uh, but, you know, today, we had a meeting with, uh, the WASSO, Williamson Area Service Organizations, and a few years ago, um, Ben Eichler said, you ever been to WASSO? And I said, oh, yeah, I know where the WASSOs are, never even heard of it, but Williamson Area WASSO. So I went to the, the next meeting, and there was probably five or six of us there, and we maintained anywhere from five to maybe eight or nine, today there was twenty-one. The service organizations here are phenomenal, but they've also learned that we need each other, and this whole community starts working together like that. I don't know of anybody that just belongs to one thing, and it's telling, if, once you say yes, you're, you're going on all kinds of stuff, so, um, people say yes, get involved, you don't have to go to every meeting, you don't have to do everything, do what you can, and gradually get involved, and you will get back more than you ever give, tell yourself, uh, so, we need more volunteers, we need more younger people, when I was younger, with three kids, no way could I do very much, but, uh, we, we do need more help with volunteers, and, uh, thank you.
Kent? When he called me and told me that this was what he had to do, it was, it was difficult to accept for me personally, but I understood it, and that was me being selfish, wanting you to be my anchor on that end. A little history here, um, Kent and I were both write-in candidates back in two thousand thirteen, and I really don't remember what the vote count was, but it was close, and that just made, yeah, that part, this long, this big fish story, but, that just, you know, he sparked something in me, and I decided, you know what, I'm gonna get a place on, at that table, too, um, he has, what he has done for this community, his passion is immeasurable, I can't even say, you know, um, his, his reach is very far, he brought the Traveling Vietnam Wall to this community and raised the funds, all of it, one hundred percent, the city did not, you know, spend a dime, he is putting back together the Old Scout Island for the Honor for All Park, again, he's raising all of those funds, um, so that it doesn't become a city-funded project. He gives of his time with, meeting with veterans, um, which he has shared publicly, and he has been, um, somebody that I feel has mentored me, just because of his lifetime history and everything that he's done, and our past is who makes us who we are today, and we take from that, and we use it, and we help our communities move forward, and I am really gonna miss you, sitting down there, so I hope you show up out there, and, you know, keep us, keep us, you know, our feet to the fire, we need you, we need that. So with that, I am going to now ask, um, we have to go into closed session, I'm gonna ask for a, uh, motion to move us into closed session, and at that time, um, our audience will need to leave council chambers, so we can do some business.
So?
Second. Do we have to stay in the meeting?
Yeah. All right, yeah, to discuss.
Make a motion to discuss attorney-client privilege letter from Cole, uh, City Attorney?
Thank you.
Second.
All right, all those, do we have to vote, or all in favor?
Two-thirds vote.
Okay, all right, roll call, Holly? Paul?
Yes.